This conference will now be recorded.
Ready?
I was supposed to go here.
Okay. I call this regular meeting of the city commission order. Shannon, roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes, I'm here.
Mayor Schumacher.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here.
Mayor Boe.
Here.
Mayor White.
Here.
Okay. Commissioner Frigil, would you leave us in our invitation this evening?
Yes, value this please. Lord, this evening I want to thank you so much for us gathering once again like we do every two weeks, Lord, to bring our thoughts and our ideas together, Lord, and find good solutions for our community. I want to thank you also for all the construction that's been going on down Main, Lord, all the positive atmosphere that's been happening. It's been long awaited. I know a lot of these projects were set to take place before COVID. Due to COVID, when a lot of them, but due to high spirits and good people in place, we kept pushing, they kept pushing. And now here we are, and all the projects that they saw are here with us today and are coming to life. And thank you, Lord, for giving them the strength and the wisdom to continue to push forward, and to help improve our community. Thank you for all these businesses in our community, Lord, that have taken the risk to be a part of our community, Lord, and invest with us. Lord, I ask you, Lord, to bless us, Lord, in a positive way, Lord, that we may think positive, Lord, and achieve your goals, Lord, in peace, that we all may work together as one unit, Lord, to continue to move this city forward. Thank you for this last weekend, Lord, with festivities, ADC grant, festivities for the community, Lord. Thank you for allowing everyone to go home safe, Lord. Thank you for the nice hot weather. I guess it's time that we get outside and start working, making everything look nice, Lord, in your name. I just want to thank you once again for all the positive that you are bringing to our community, Lord. Amen.
Duncan Plaid.
Plaid to meet you through the flag. The state of America stands one nation under God, indefensible with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag, the state of New Mexico, the Z S symbol of our friendship, our united culture.
Maybe see. All right. Let entertain a motion on the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Any discussions, corrections, amendment? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. Consideration of minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of minutes of April 24th, 2023.
Second. Okay, motion accepted for the adoption of minutes. Any discussion, any addition, corrections? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call, please.
Yes.
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 Yes. All right. Start. Or Shannon, do you have anything to say this evening? Question, commissioners. Thank you. Let's gather. Anything this evening?
I'd just like to say that since I've been here, it's been a really good opportunity, actually say it's been a great opportunity. I've really enjoyed working with this group of people. It's been a wonderful, wonderful team experience. Everybody has really chipped in to train me. I couldn't ask for a better, a better place to work. On another note, I started putting together something that I've called the Lovington Family Album. I haven't finished it, so I didn't bring it this evening. What it is, is it's actually, I'm putting it together, I'm looking through the newspaper ads for things that, what we've done in the past and present for maybe the police department, things that they've done that have been good in the, in the community. I'm taking those newspaper articles and putting them into an album. I'm taking things that maybe the streets department, water department, things like that, articles that were written where they helped the community, maybe they pulled a tree out that was needed to be pulled out so that made the water lines, you know, where they needed the water line to be, you know, maybe it was obstructed by a tree, or maybe it was helping a citizen. So I'm trying to kind of gather some articles and put that into this album so that it shows where we've actually been working to help each other and working as a team, as a family. Hoping to bring the community together to show that we're, we're in this together.
I appreciate that.
I hope to have that soon.
Thank you. Question is, commissioner, vote.
Not a question. I'd like to thank you very much for the positive energy you're putting out there. We need that definitely. There's too much negativity around, and any little bit helps. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate that very much. And we're going to have new board, and we hope that the experience continues to be what it has so far. Chief, how are you?
Good, sir. How are you? I'm no real.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, Mr. City Manager, two things. First, we continue to make improvements at the police department. I have budgeted for the acquisition of new pistols for our department for the next fiscal year. Of note, these new SIG nine millimeter pistols will have red dot sights on them. Red dot sights greatly improve accuracy, thereby cutting down on ammunition and overtime costs during qualifications. Through a trade-in program, the total cost of the new guns, the new sights, and the new holsters will be only $14,000. In the past 15 months, we have purchased new next-generation tasers. We are set to receive new body worn cameras this month. We will receive new dash cams and new ticket issuing printers for our units in June, new security lighting, and new computer server, mobile data terminals, new units, and other equipment. It is my goal to make our department the best-equipped police department in Lee County. Except for the pistols, all of these new systems were paid for by state or private funding. Second. As requested by the city manager, I will now pass out a report on the city's E-zone or economic zone for code enforcement. Code enforcement officer Laura Guerra, who is here tonight, worked extremely hard the past two weeks, physically inspecting every property that falls within the city's E-zone. For those not familiar, the E-zone encompasses Main Street from Love to Avenue R and Avenue D from Seventeenth Street to Commercial. Officer Guerra's study identified 40 properties in violation and warnings, warnings were given, and in most contact was made with the property owners. Most of these violations are cosmetic in nature. I have the complete reports by property here if any of you need to see them. And Ms. Guerra is also here to answer any questions the commission may have. But I would look to the commission and the city manager for guidance on further action to be taken within the E-zone, and I'll stand for any questions.
Give us just a minute.
Yes, sir.
And I appreciate you holding this together.
It's all Ms. Guerra, who worked real hard Saturdays.
Thank you very much.
And she actually has all the properties included photographs right here, separate report on each property. And there's four of them.
I was speaking to the chief earlier and told that I had spent $3,500 at my house to ensure I can get a ticket. I just contracted it out and said, you know what, I don't want to take it.
I've seen a lot of people doing work. I've seen some people actually in E-zone here Sunday doing some painting. I imagine that's probably people that you talk to and stuff, so.
Yes.
A little bit of improvements, a little at a time is great, you know? Can't expect it to be all done at once, but I'd like to see the people take pride in what they have. Because like I said, there's business owners next to them, people, that if their buildings are dilapidated and run down, they need to be addressed and taken care of.
And I did see people working on Frontier a lot on Saturday, cutting down weeds and stuff like that. So it is happening in effect, like we always say, we'll work with people, we're not looking to cause hardship.
Right.
You know, I may not be so reasonable, but Ms. Guerra is very reasonable, and I usually deal with her, so that's a good thing.
I don't see that. Thank you very much.
Really appreciate it also.
Any other comments? Well, Chief, you and I, obviously, have a discussion on this, and having, for everyone's information, I'm on this list, so just want everybody, there's transparency. We inherited the, descendants of my parents inherited a couple of properties on here. And I knew at some point that this was going to come about. And so I had a discussion with Chief over the past week, and I would like to just kind of get some verbiage out there to portray to these owners the direction we want, they were attempting. And so we're going to engage just a little bit. My questions at the time were, what is, what is the ultimate goal? I mean, are there unsightliness, purpose, or whatever? In our discussion, I brought to light that in addition to the ones that I have on here, the city has one on here, at least one. We were, at the time, we were talking about, we weren't sure if Avenue R or Erlacher was the end of it, or if the other one was encompassed, but it's not. But anyway.
Talk about the A and H title loans building?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't think it's on.
No, well, it's not, because it's past commercial, that's what I'm saying. But when we discussed it, we weren't sure if commercial was the end of it or not. So I, not having the ordinance in front of me, and you're welcome to add to this. What is, what is the ultimate goal? Or what do you feel like the ordinance is saying is an ultimate goal? What are we attempting to do? Is it to clean up the structures? Is it to change the purposing of the structures? Because I did do a canvassing, or canvassing, excuse me, of the buildings, not having this list. I just literally drove up down Main Street and Avenue D. And, you know, I noticed there is an improvement in some of the buildings that are on this list. There are definitely areas and buildings that I am a part of are definitely one of, or some of those that need to be brought up to appearance level and everything else. But a lot of these buildings were, their purpose occurred before the E-zone ordinance was enacted. So I know that you brought this on, so I just wanted, for the business, I mean, for the general public that would be affected by this kind of, what direction are we wanting to go? Because, you know, we want to know what we need to do to meet and comply to. But the discussion that we had a lot of is, okay, if we fix the buildings up and we, and they are not being purposed for what the ordinance says, then what brings them into, other than having empty buildings that have for lease or for sale, then what are our other options? What are their options? Because if you look at the various buildings that are in the E-zone that are empty, then what, they still don't comply with the ordinance, not truly. Because they're not, they're not generating GRT. They are not, they may be storing items like Troy Harris. Okay, it has no purpose at this point. We've talked about it, we're talking about it. But right now, all it does is store, ADC has some things there, I'm sure the city has some things there, but it has no purpose. And, you know, driving, there are a lot of, I was trying to think, Ron Humphries, various essentials of, it's an old business that was there, but anyway, and I know he's on here. What are we trying, what is the true purpose that we're trying to do? Go ahead, absolutely. Whenever you're ready to jump in.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, I think overall it's quality of life. There's, most of this you see is cosmetics, weeds, broken windows. If we can address the basic cosmetics, I think that's a plus for us, Lord. By cleaning up the E-zone, I think that would appeal to other businesses coming in. Where I live, right across the Bob's, there's some abandoned buildings there, and it could be a safety issue. And so if the owners were willing to fix the broken windows to, like I said, weeds, make it appealing, I think that would be a big plus for all of us across the board. I think that's, that's the start.
I will, I will relate that to the people that I know that are on here and let them know. Because that was a question they were asking. You know, storage is one of the words in the language that is not an allowable purpose. Kind of hard to have, and I don't know about you, but in my family, if you, if there is an empty spot, it's full of something. You know, my mother could fill up lots of things and did. But appearance, debt and only is something that I would like to see. And for years, we've known sooner or later, when we get to this point, that we need to act on. So we're to that point, and that was the reason I wondered. For everyone that's involved, for everyone that is going to be affected by this, they just needed a little guidance. Yes, there's an ordinance, but do we really want to have a bunch of businesses that have for sale or lease in the windows? Because while we are attracting business to our area, they're not overrunning. So I mean, there's the old ShopCo, Alco slash TGY, if you want to go back that far. Building is now empty again. There are several buildings, Gibson's building falls under this, which we all know is file property of all of these items, and they just need some direction because it can't be, it can't be an ongoing violation to effectively have an empty building, and that's why we're. So as long as it's cosmetic, and that's our goal, then I think we can achieve that. And goal weeds, parents, and or sick. Chief, did that, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What you want to do is you want to lead by example. I've said it out there before, you want to lead by example. My idea is to promote economic growth and the community pride by having buildings abandoned and boards on the front. To me, that's doing neither. You want to attract investors into the community, and you want to have, you want to have a, present in an attractive community. So if you can dial them up, do whatever you got to do, make it look good, yeah. 99% is presentation. So you want to make it look nice, you want to take care of it, you want to clean it up, but you want, it's an ongoing thing. It's never going to be done, that you're going to be done with it. It's always, it always takes time, fresh coat of paint, you know, old weeds. It's something you're going to do continuously. So if you're just going to leave it sit there, then you're better off getting rid of it. You're better off selling it. Don't leave it there to drag down everybody else. Like I said, you got businesses that are coming in that are trying to do good and trying to look good and keep their area clean, and it's doing just the opposite by having businesses and all that, you know? Take pride in what you have. That's basically what I feel.
I understand that.
And I think, I think to elaborate a bit on that is that, you know, this board has been bombarded for years. Clean up this town, clean up this town, and we just finally got the right people in place to take action, and we have to support them 100%. And the reason why is because there is development, and we need to start making this town look presentable. And with a brand-new Main Street hopefully coming within a year or so. You know, when you drive down Main, I want people to tell me that it may not be a big developing town, but it's a nice, clean town, and we just have to go there. And like I mentioned before, I said, everybody ought to be thankful, because for the last 20 years that I know, they've been getting away with it, so it's been a free ride up to this point. And it's like, you ought to be thankful, and they knew that this day was coming. And just like me, hell, by the way, I started tickets, I see tickets being issued, I said, man, I better spend a little money and get my place cleaned up. That's what I did. I spent $3,500 and got it cleaned up, make sure I didn't get a ticket, so. But I think everybody ought to do the same. It's like, you know, it's been, been, but we've been bombarded on it, you know? We just finally got the right people in the right place, and we just have to support. And I understand what the mayor's talking about, if we need to tweak it, you know? Now, now we have to tweak, now that we're taking action, getting something done, then you got to tweak into a bit, because before we weren't getting nothing done, so we didn't know what to tweak. Now, since it's being citations are being issued and so forth, maybe, maybe there's always, there's always room for tweaking on it. So something we may consider, but I appreciate all the effort that you're putting into it. And you're saying, yes.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always going to be violations. We have one code enforcement officer, so it's just how, what direction do you want us to go in?
So we understand.
We're happy to strike a midway.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything further? All right. Any other questions for Chief Warren? All right. Party. Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, so.
Chief, in Miami lunch Sundays, I mean, make sure you live.
So in the next meeting on May the 22nd, I will present the drought proclamation for the Fourth of July. You'll have this in front of you right now to look over. You'll have two weeks to look over, so if you think there's any changes that need to be made, it will be put on the agenda as an action item to be voted on. We will revisit it at the June 12th meeting, and at this time, we can extend it, if that's what we need to do. If we haven't had any rain and we decide to extend it. So at that time, that will get us through to July 11th, because it's good for 30 days. So that gets us, it covers us through the Fourth of July week. If we start getting rain before then, then we still have the June 26th meeting to come in and resend that if we need to. And we can also hold a special meeting after the 26th if we have to, if we start getting the rain and everything looks fit, to resend it. At the end of March, I've suspended all burn permits in our whole area, and I feel that the drought proclamation is prudent, and it's in line with the state fireworks ordinance, which I have that as well. Like I said, we're just, I'm just giving it to you all now, for you all to read over, look through it, and then we'll vote on it as, as an action item. And then the next meeting, if need be, we'll extend it to get us through the Fourth of July. That way we don't have the same thing that happened last year. So a second thing is, we have hired, or scheduled a new hiring testing for June the 3rd at 9:00 a.m. I received several resumes on Indeed. Problem is, when I call them and I get ahold of them, most of them don't actually want to come to test. They just want to put their application up there. So Leno will be doing a walking field trip on Thursday, May the 18th. This will be starting at 8:00 a.m. and ending at approximately 2:30 p.m. They will be walking from Leno to the town square. The route they will walk is north down the alley between Main and First Street and then east on Central. They will be touring the museum, the library, the fire department, and police cars and other equipment that they have set up there in the central area. So just a reminder to everyone, be extra cautious while driving in those areas. This is kindergarten we're talking about. It's not older kids, it's the little, no pre-cages, kinder, but still.
What day was that again?
The 18th.
18th.
So our numbers for April, our total EMS calls was 224. We have 30 inter-facility transfers, 22 airport transfers, 75 refusal, canceled DOA, 10 table calls, and 25 fire calls. And that is all I have at this time. I won't have any questions.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to commend you for being proactive and learning from last year. I know you've just come on board and you got caught with everything, and yeah, we missed, we missed something. You missed something, but it was all of us, because we're trying to work as a team and forward. And but I appreciate you bringing this way in advance, so we can, we can have a lot, lot easier ticket on this one.
So we only have 20 days prior, but I feel that we owe it to the public and to our vendors to, you know, get ahead of the game, and we don't know we have a head in the rain, so we're really dressed.
Yeah. In the last 14 years, how many times have we ever rescinded it?
I don't think ever. I'm just leaving it out there.
I was trying to think if I, I just, I think we got some rain one year, maybe, but it's only a couple days before.
Well, and that's truthfully, if, I mean, if that happens, we have the ability to hold a special session to resend it. I just want to make sure that we're, like I said, covering everything, and we owe it to the, to the public and to the vendors to make sure we're doing this ahead of time and let them know that if we start getting the rain, sometimes we do, sometimes we don't, then we are willing to do that, if, at that time, that is able to be resented. Anyone else?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner, vote.
Yes, see you that day when you put skip on. What do I always say? What do I always say? What we need to do as far as the community? Eat shop vocal.
He's close to me, my dear.
Shop vocal, eat vocal. No, definitely, definitely. No, definitely.
Yeah. I'll tell Skip. I mean, his wife are having breakfast. So I just.
Well, yes, eat local. Thank you very much. We appreciate it. I'd like to put out there, just piggybacking off of David there with Evelyn, Single de Mayo. Great job. I know your collaboration with Main Street, I mean, with Lobbington Chamber and vendors and everything. Really looks like a really good turnout. Thank you very much for everything you do. Appreciate it. Seen lights on over at the Lee County Lovington Theater. I was shocked when I was driving down the road, like, what the heck? I seen that. That looked really nice, really nice. They're doing, doing a good job. Very much appreciate what my Main Street reporter doing. Thank you very much.
I think I said everything I want to say here.
Okay.
Thank you.
You did a great job. Mr. White.
Mr. Dan. I just had a question. What, what happened with our new water feature? Get that resolved?
Our water feature.
On the cheese.
Yeah. Yes. Yes. We do, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, we did stop the leak. The guy did stop the leak there last night. They're going to wait for it to dry, then they're going to. I believe so. Yes, sir. That's all I have.
No, I can nothing.
Nothing to find it or report. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission. I had a conversation with the county manager, Mike Gallagher, the other day. And it looks very positive that the city of Lovington will receive some county funds. One of the concerns that was brought up, it was echoed among the commission that they would like to see the money used for infrastructure. I know in the past, we've had discussions about savings, but I'm working with F. Arrow and with Tracy on our budget. I strongly believe we will be able to have funding for saving, for savings. But going back to the county, what we're looking at, again, this is tentative, but $3.5 million for road projects within the city of Lovington, so $3.45 million. $1.5 million for the wastewater plant, and that includes the collections. Now, the 1.5 for the wastewater, what we would like to do is use $500,000 as matching funds if we get our federal grant. The federal grant will be about $3.5 million. And if we get that federal grant, I'm very positive that we're going to get that. We need to match $500,000. So that would be a huge plus for us if we, if we match. What that means is $100,000, $1 million for the wastewater. And then about $555,000 for the water department. And what we want to do is focus on the water things. I think Bernard and his crew are doing an excellent job, but by bringing in contractors, I think we could, we, we'd be very proactive with that respect. And I just want to, what the conversation we had a few minutes ago, it's quality life. It's, it's the E-zone, it's quality water, our roads. If we want to bring in additional businesses to Lovington, they look at everything. Our parks, if you look at our Avenue D Park, if you look at Birch, Hulk, Martin Luther King, they're, they're coming along. I spoke to Jason, we still need a lot of work in the Jaffra Park. If you have a chance, we'll look at the softball fields. We've made progress at the softball fields, the Little League fields. We're working on, on the baseball field. So we've made some progress, but it's everything. I think everything that we work on will be a huge benefit for the city of Lovington. With that said, any staff, any questions that Mayor and Commission have?
Commissioner, anyone?
Thank you.
Well, you don't live a thing like Crystal Walk, so I'm assuming you're telling me.
Yes, I am. He's currently out this entirely for training. So I'm just, I've been tasked with the responsibility of sitting in front of you all. Thanks for having me and also making sure hopefully things run smoothly from here on out. So, but no, no planning and zoning business to discuss.
Oh, in, uh, following up last meeting, I'm assuming that we're not going to be broadcasting a closed session.
Yes, sir. Yes, and most partly one of the reasons I'm here, I'm just making sure that, you know, everything gets shut down, you know, things that aren't supposed to be broadcasted don't get broadcasted. So that's one of my, that's probably my, my main responsibility tonight is just making sure things stay private that are supposed to stay private.
One thing we might just follow up is somebody kind of listen in and make sure, you know, a minute or so afterwards that it's no longer. Not a problem. Thanks, sir.
Counselor.
So Mayor, Commissioner, other than some comments on our first, on action item and resolution 41, I don't have anything new, but we'd be happy to say for questions if you have.
We'll just wait for that item and then we'll move from there. Thank you. This evening, all I want to bring up is, first of all, I did want to congratulate the EDC on, and I'm going to say Evelyn because it's mainly Evelyn. If you didn't know her, she used to be in a second, and now she's a little darker than she was because she spent a couple of days in the sun out there. But anyway, great event. Absolutely, you know, we didn't, no one knew until you were finally able to tally that over 11,000 people came through the gates. I would say we had a huge success. The venue was amazing. I mean, to move it to Fairgrounds was, first of all, I think it made the venue, I think it made everything more accessible to everyone. Are you going to give up? Do you want to give a quick report? You, yes, absolutely.
So I want to give you an update on Single de Mayo. We had zero issues, zero, we didn't have any, we didn't get hurt, we didn't have any bites, we didn't have any issues whatsoever. Team roping side of it, they had 677 entries. They started at 8 o'clock on the dot and that was not over until 2:00 AM. It was a long day for them. And us, we started at noon and we went all the way through 1:00 AM. Vendors, we had 45 vendors. Food ran out around 10:30, 11 o'clock. Was going to be honest, I was very nervous about moving out to that side due to the fact that, you know, the park was, the area that I use was a little smaller. I knew I was able to get maneuver. I knew I'd been there for over five years and knew if I ran into any problems, what to do. Here I did not. I was technically going in blind, but I have no complaints. Public people that I didn't even know were coming up to me telling me that it was probably one of the best decisions I've ever done was to move out to that location. Bathrooms, we've all have to use porta potties. And the county did an excellent, excellent job. I did get an email today from Jim congratulating us on the well-organized event and actually said that keeping the county was very happy with the turnout. And if we wanted to continue using their facilities, they'd be more than happy to continue that partnership. Also, Jason and his crew were out there, were early, safe. I had a little video about 2:30 in the morning, they were still there. And they were non-stop, non, non-stop. They did an excellent job. Thank you so much for allowing me to have them there. It wasn't good for them, I wanted them to be able to control the trash. We filled up three full dumpsters and a trash trailer with trash. My family and I, we cleaned up on Sunday, the parking lot. We filled up about four trash bags of just stuff that was out in the parking lots. As soon as I, we did pay for drone footage, once that highlight video comes out, I definitely would like to share this with you just so you can see the outcome of it. Like I mentioned on the counters, we had four. At one point in time, we had five gates open out at Fairgrounds and we did tally a lot of them until the end of the day. Very well, happy, happy. So very long three days, very, very long three days. Also, thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for helping me out with the car show. One less thing that I have to take care of. They did an excellent job, they promoted it very well. Plankton, very nice and very happy, you know, the collaboration that we're able to do. Other than that, if you guys have any questions.
I would also like to recognize, this was our eighth. This, we can't say it well, just because we skipped 20 and 21, but the eight Single de Mayo that everyone has put on. And out of those eight, I've been the judge for the Asado for eight years. And we had a new entrance this year, but our, the head of our streets department, Bernardo, won the Asado. And I will, I will say that it was probably the best that I've ever had. He did a phenomenal job and kind of was the last minute entrance. So we're good, we're glad that one of our city managers has, was able to stay in town and because originally he was going to be gone, but he was crowned the maestro of Asado event. So.
It was really good. All he had six judges and all six judges that, I mean, hands down, it was the best Asado event.
It was really, really good. I ate my whole plate, so I think everybody else did. But anyway, it was an awesome event. Thanks, thank you again. I know it was a lot of work. I know you put so much work in there. We really appreciate it. I think everyone can step or step back and see the success that it had.
I was going to let you know also that the perks of having an event, I actually brought well, and one of my, my sound folks even in an additional room, they, um, they're right or requested three rooms and I only read two. But when I went back to get another room, the comfort room was completely sold out. So he slept in, had to drive an RV. He slept in an RV.
That's the whole use of water stacks is heads and bails. So awesome. Other than that, all that I know of. So we will move on. This brings us to our public comment time. We ask that you come to the podium, state your name, speak your piece, and we'll go from there. So we open that up to the I and my adopted me.
Hi, guys. Just a reminder, we have our big blue food truck is actually open and they started today. They are a La Tapadia. They are a Mexican cuisine, but it's Jalisco style, so it is a little bit different. They will be open Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. And they will be in there for two weeks. And then after that, it starts rotating out. I said get the fire chief on having our food truck over there. So just during the duration of the food truck program, that food truck will be out there. And while the theater is also closed, just as a reminder. This Friday, we have live in downtown. That's going to be live music every other Friday in downtown. We're trying to just kind of increase pedestrian activity in downtown. It will be playing at Frank Ashley Plaza. That'll be free. We'll also have one of our downtown vendors, which is the Flush Express people. And then also somebody who does permanent jewelry. So it'll be a lot of fun after they come out. We also have coupons that will be giving out every, every live in downtown for attendees. And you have one week to use them and they'll be for different downtown businesses. So just trying to promote everybody and work together. And so we hope to see everyone Friday at 6:00.
But you don't run off. I'm going to basically do the same as Commissioner Bow that I noticed the neon was actually lit up. Not complete, but it was good to see it active again. Brendan and I have 60 years with the lead theater, so it's starting to look like it did at one time.
How many years did it take? I mean, the fund was available.
Since 2015.
No, but the, the, the fund was available for how long?
Since 2019 was when we were officially awarded. The funding from capital outlay through Representative Pettigrew, Crennan and Gallegos were the three spearheads of that one. And then the second award was from Representative Anderson and Eagle. So it's been lots of different assistance over the years. It is not complete. We ran into some wonderful issues with birds. So if anybody has a great eye, let me know. I have a task for you. It, yeah, they destroyed neon already. So and then also there was literally my high virgin bees inside of the murky and in different areas. So that was really fun and that delayed us. And then, of course, the weather, we're hoping fingers crossed by next week to have it completed. But we'll see how it goes.
Does it crows? Does them howl at work when people put howls?
So I was told it can howl, but apparently they get smart after a while and they know all their words.
Getting canned up there.
That bird doesn't move, so, yeah.
We will be, we have checkup, they're talking about, we are going to be adding some kind of noise maker and then just spikes. I know it's kind of weird, but there's honestly nothing else we can do. And they like literally will sit on the neon and break it. And that's, as he was installing it, literally that happened three different times. So the E on one part, that's why it's broken. And then on the front of the, of the lead part is also because of that. And so that's been real fun.
I was just excited to see the guys up there in Tybalt show all that stuff out. Nothing else was done. I was just excited for that.
It was so, oh my gosh, I'm serious. Like the pictures he sent me, like they were taller than me. I was like.
What is your, we are in that time of year, hailstorms are, this is the time of year for the next two months. During your construction, you have a plan on, because that's going to be something that probably needs to be addressed. There's going to be, every time we have a hailstorm like I shared, then we're going to have a lot of destruction to that particular neon.
I have it in my budget for what our maintenance and stuff is going to be, just kind of a, a small cushion there for that. I will point out that neon was going to be easier to replace than that LED, which is why we did that. I don't know if you guys have ever been to the Carl's Bag. They redid, there's literally four years now and switched over completely to LED. And it is already burnt out, the whole top part where it says cavern is already burnt out. I mean, it's literally from the heat. There is nothing that they can do for that. And when we discussed it with the company, they were like, if it's neon, if it's LED, I have to replace the whole entire rope, which is why such a big part of theirs is already out. And if it's just neon, it's just a little strand. It's really easy to replace. We can tie them in a lot faster. So in the grand scheme and things, it looks like easier just because heat is always and forever a bigger issue in my opinion. Yeah. And we've seen the signs in downtown, right? Like orange show burns out because of that golden seat insurance too.
But two out of the last three years, the heat on a lot of it's on Bobs, the ones downtown or whatever. There, we've definitely increased UV damage over these past few years. So here, we have 100, we have at least 120 days of heat. We only hopefully have maybe two days of damaging damage.
Hopefully, yes. Right?
No more than.
I was like, it'll be my luck and we'll have like 10 hailstorms this year. But no, so hopefully it, it stays better or, you know, at least weather wise, it doesn't go as crazy as it did, you know, last year. But it is supposed to be easier and we do have a small contingency in it, in our budget for that kind of reason.
Thank you. Anyone else here? All right. Anyone else before we move on? Okay. We're moving on. All right. Bring the starting items. I, I brought the first item on. Kind of came from the city manager. And this came from last meeting that when the EDC is requesting funds and that we approve, up to this point, it was brought up that we had to go through an ordinance. And so I called Evelyn, Evelyn from the commissions. Anyway, and she said, well, just so happens that the EDD, it was going to be there the next day. I said, can you discuss that with him? And this was to hopefully speed along. The, the whole objective was, as in the last meeting, the city issued a check, which was an amendment to the previous ordinance. But we didn't go through another ordinance for that particular check. And so I said, do we really need? And so I said, do we really need to go through an ordinance? And so that brings us to this item. Go ahead and you can say what the EDD said.
Well, I collaborated, you know, with the situation was going on here with the city. The EDD Jim Lucero, he's actually a city commissioner for Clovis as well. And he, they have Lita Bogart in their community as well. And they go through the ordinance, ordinance process too. He says it's not fun because you have to advertise it for 10 days. And then you have to bring it back to the commission. So it's not a fast and easy process. Said originally, um, you could potentially move it to a resolution, but you would have to really look, your attorney, he said, your attorney would have to really look at the ordinance and make sure, um, that it would be valid. If you void it, then it would have to go back to the voters. But if it was presented as part of your ballot showing that it was going to be an ordinance, it has to stay an ordinance. There's no way you can move it back without it going back for a vote. That was said, um, the, the actual, the situation that we had with the check, where he said that we did not have to have, um, do another ordinance. We can actually do an amendment to the prior one and just change the amounts that were originally approved.
I, you have a little comment on this.
Well, I think the ordinance is the proper way to go. If you take a look at the purpose of Lita and how that's set up. One of the things that state identifies as being enforced transparency. And so the public has better opportunity to take a look at how those funds are being spent, why they're being spent, where they're being spent. Any ordinance process, and they've got a little bit different ability to. And so that could be my, I know it's slower. I know it's more cumbersome, but you know, you're trading off transparency for quick and efficient, so.
There, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, this question is to Patrick. Since the commission already approved the 30,000 for the traffic study, isn't there anything in the ordinance or they're, they're requesting additional 5,000 for this stuff? I just don't want to hold it up. We have to go through an entire process. I'm thinking of this out, this traffic study we need to complete. And Evelyn, if we go through the steps ordinance, are we still gonna meet the timeframe?
Well, adding to that, the 5,000, I, good thing with Magrav Consulting, which is Claudius, he's doing the site. He actually went ahead and continued doing the site, knowing that it was in the process. He said, I know it's not gonna, you guys are not gonna say no because you know exactly what it's for. So it's actually already been done as of today. We got the, everything was submitted to New Mexico DOT.
I, I think the situation there is, um, what we're, what we're changing is just a dollar amount. So the public were to come back and say, how is that money spent? Where is that money spent? All of those things are the same. It's just a dollar amount. So I think the recommendation, uh, from Jim would be accurate. If you just go back and send that as opposed to starting the process. So if, if we were doing the traffic study for company X at 1, 2, 3 North Main, and then decided, no, we're gonna change that and how it's gonna be 1, 2, 3 South Main, a different process. Then that's all we're working on. So all we're really changing here is the dollar amount. The purpose, what was presented to members of the public, all, all of that's the same.
I agree. And then in the discussion, since this was already at this point, it was easier to continue with this 5,000 as another ordinance. Or we would have had to delay another two weeks to just do an amendment because it didn't make the agenda anytime. So that's the reason we're continuing in this particular instance. But hopefully we can change, we will be able to use an amendment in future and move it along a little bit. Thank you, Evelyn, for, for talking. Any further questions or comments?
Yeah, I need a question.
Yes.
If we do, I was just going to take the last ordinance that was sent in November. I've got coffee, so if you're. And just, yeah, just basically changed the dollar amount to 5,000 with the new ordinance number. If y'all want to keep that the same, I do have a couple of questions. Would we have to do a new project participation agreement with that?
Well, I think everything is the same except for the dollar. So I, I think we could go back and. One of the things that's really important is sitting here in the room, we understand why we're changing, let's say, from 30 to 35,000. I think it's important just to put in the, in the ordinance, the reason why. So it's, you know, there was a change we're going up because of a price increase or something that was left out, whatever that might be. It's the same process, uh, that's going to take place out of the field. It's just the dollar amount is changed. So that, that I think would be the easiest way to do. And, and keep in mind, it was about what, two or three meetings ago? We had a change in zoning, I think that's 2008. And so there were very few of us that were here at that time. And when that comes out, you know, I'm gonna think back, all right, 2008, what's going on? What happened? That's a pretty unique situation. So the more information you're gonna add, clarify. That way, 10 years down the road, this comes back out to be an issue. It, it's here in the ordinance and it's clear. And so nobody has to go back and really try to recreate the time. That, that would be my recommendation.
And one thing that I noticed when I was looking at that was that, you know, section four says it becomes law, whatever, after 30 days. And really an ordinance, once it's adopted, is five days after it's published. As adopted, that it becomes effective.
There may be some additional language that Lita had at that time, but I can see.
So when we get to action item on 41, we did not change the agenda. This was for a new. I'm sorry, not 41, 42, I'm sorry. 42.
It'll have a new ordinance number, but it's the same ordinance that that is.
Right.
Except with the new number and maybe, uh, we're gonna add traffic study to the general at 9:23 North Main.
If we don't have the time crunch, at least leave it away.
Say it. And then basically vote, vote this, because this is to publish for the 5,000.
Right.
Um, but in reality, are we going to amend 595 and make it 35,000?
I think this is, at least looking at what's on here, it's a brand new. It looks like it's separate, so that's acceptable.
There's too much to do, yeah. Right, okay. So when we move forward with the new ordinance and for the 5,000.
Right, because it's just adding 5,000.
Any others? All right. Uh, let's bring this to the second non-action item. The increase in motor vehicle department fees. City manager, did you put this on? I know that Maria is here, so Mr. Mayor, members of the commission and the like. We have an office to, is that home this one? Is she back though?
She's got it.
And you should have that in your package, right?
Mayor, commissioners. Um, so on here, I believe it, um, it was listed as increasing fees. But it's actually not an increase in fees except for the, the bin inspection. The, on the reservation that Shannon, I'm in the, um, it's actually an additional fee. It's a fee that we will charge on transactions we have been processing, just not charging. Such as one of the items on here is the vehicle toll forms and the medical DOT cards. So those have always been a courtesy type transaction that we do. We process it and don't charge the customer for it. These two items are transactions that individuals can do online. Um, but when they come in and have a service and they're servicing this type of transaction, we've always just. And so offices in order to increase some of this revenue have started to charge for this type of transaction. Um, so those are just things we have been processing. We just haven't been charging. The one for the double transactions. I don't know really how I feel about this one, but we, we don't have a lot of this type of transaction. The customer is told, when it's a double transaction, it means that John sold it to Mary. But John never put it, the title in his name. So then Mary gets to pay double taxes. And therefore a double transaction fee because this customer is told beforehand. You know, John didn't pay his taxes, so now you're gonna pay his taxes as yours. And so, um, the customer, like I said, is told before we even initiate the contract. But I did put this on here as a, an additional transaction fee. And it would be another $6. Um, and the last one on here, that's a bin inspection. And that one is something we've always charged for. It's just been the minimum of $6 fee per transaction. And there are some offices, mostly the private owned, that are opening up around our area that are charging 50 to $100 on these bin inspections. Because they do take some of our time to go outside and inspect the 18 members that are out there that you see coming through our office and we're getting with oil fields. Business doing good right now. We do have a lot of business transactions coming through and a lot of them require the inspections. Because we live so close to Texas, those do require an inspection.
Couldn't you just drop that? Because that'd make my life so whole. It's about half the time, everything. I got no from Texas, so. I'm not. So, so.
But right now we just charge $6.
So clarify something for me, because I know the last time that we did some stuff like this, you know, because we have the $4 fee, or you still have the $4 fee. Um, you know, that required a separate check. So this, these fees here will not require another check. You just still write it with the, the same check. You'll have your, your title and everything with one. And then this will be the fee.
These are, these are city fees.
Right. Just, just wanted to make sure because somebody's gonna have me. So now I've got to write another check on top of the other check that's with the other check.
The same separate check that you already wrote.
Okay, all right. Just wanted to clarify that. It doesn't matter because then I get this double thing here because Joe Johnny can register last time, so it doesn't matter. Yeah.
Anybody have anything to work rainbow? Anything further, Mr.? Any questions, commission?
No.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the interest. All right. So I'm guessing, uh, the major that this will be on our action item for the next meeting. Always, I'm sorry. You're right. First item on the, got you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a most, everyone in the action.
We are facing.
Sweet. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion for resolution 2023 dash 040 approval of MVD transaction fee.
We have a motion and second to approve the new fees we just heard about. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Shannon, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Mayor, vote.
Yes.
Mr. Dandy.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Trupillo.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, committee commission for resolution 2023 dash 041, approval of agreement with Levington Main Street Lead Theater Operations.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval of this resolution. We have Levington EDC here. Main Street, sorry, sorry.
We will stand for questions, comments, or?
Oh, question, yeah, this is. You know, first of all, I want to say all due respect and so forth for your efforts. Just like I mentioned during prayer, a lot of this stuff was lost on COVID, the financial due to COVID. And your team kept pushing, kept pushing. And here we are, you know, with a nice sign. Here we are, uh, looking at a good agreement to get an MOU to get the theater up and running for our children, our local citizens. And I could just commend you and I really appreciate a lot of respect towards, towards your group. I had, I had three concerns on it, uh, and it could be easily addressed. Like I said, I'm, I'm fully in favor of it. I just had some concerns I want to address. So right here, under duties and responsibilities, is there a portion in there where it says general maintenance costs? Or is that going to be covered by the city?
It should it in there? It does say, uh, maintenance and upkeep during the duration or during the contract rate. So once it turns back over, or if we null the contract, any maintenance and all of that stuff, we go back to you guys. So it should be listed under duties and responsibilities of Main Street. It's just a maintenance and upkeep.
Yeah, I just.
And renovation.
Maybe I missed it. I just saw the renovation and so for construction and maintenance. We'll be project manager for all construction and maintenance. But it did show that they, you would be responsible for all maintenance, general maintenance. So that, that's what I was looking for. It's, it's kind of like they right there is wanting.
I think it's a little bit further down where it says that we will be responsible for cleaning and janitorial as well.
Yeah, I saw that. I did see electric, gas, janitorial will pay for concession supplies, movie contracts and even supplies. But I just didn't see where it said general maintenance. It's like, uh, waterline, who's responsible is you or us? And it just, I didn't, I read it, I read it and I said, well, maybe I'm missing. Yeah, I just don't see it on here, unconscious, right? There's, there's stuff on here, but it doesn't say directly. I'm just saying, because if we, if we did cover that area, we would have a budget for it.
No, we can definitely add that to it. It was technically supposed to be part of the project manager because we will be the ones responsible. So that should be part of project manager's task is to pay for any maintenance and upkeep. But we can make sure that it's added, if you want to write it when you guys approve the resolution as a modification and believe that.
Can we do that side of it right now?
Yeah, we could do that. That's one thing. I had two other. And not, like I said, they're just small, small things. On executive authority, the only concern I said, I had in my view of the executive authority in regards to alcohol and, and because alcohol's in, pot's in. I just didn't know your thoughts on that, on that executive side. Are we gonna allow pot, uh, or are we gonna allow alcohol in there?
Pot can be.
I didn't, you know, you could have like a BD where people just go on or something, you know, you have.
You would have to apply for a specific licensure or something like that, so.
Okay, but I mean, you guys have the executive authority is what I'm saying.
For alcohol, we would, yes. And we would be doing that for special celebration permits as well as special events or any additional event that we chose to do. And yes.
That would be in terms of a beer garden, right?
Yeah.
So it had to come towards the board or city manager can approve it or for.
The city manager does sign off on a celebration permit. So yes, on that part, he would. If in the very, very extreme future, Levington Main Street chose to pursue a beer and wine license, it would require a school kitchen. Um, so I don't think that would be something we would be pursuing at all.
Okay, I just wanted to test, because I figured it's probably most likely be a beer garden. So it'd come towards the city manager, some sort of approval. Most likely the, the board itself would probably see, you know, have any thoughts on it. But no, that's all I have on.
Yeah.
Patrick, you had a, a request and I'm just gonna follow up.
Yeah.
That you, that was covered?
It is. It's, it's in here about, uh, insurance, the city in Levington will be listed as an additional insured liability policy. So we've got policy on the building itself. And then for any events or the actual operation day to day, you know, things will be covered in there too. I think there is language about, um, the project manager then being, uh, responsible for the construction and the maintenance. I know it's separate, but I think that it's in there. So, uh, with the additional insured, I'm happy with the language. So whatever else counts. Uh, with the additional insured, I'm happy with the language, um, so whatever else council wants to look at is. Other questions?
The, uh, in talking with, uh, the board director in Levington Main Street, uh, we talked about the roof. And I know Chuck, he's here to talk about the roof if we want to talk about it. But, uh, they are going, one of their purposes is to put a new roof on there, put new HBAC. And I said, okay, under our current policy, and I know we're gonna be, they're gonna be meeting tomorrow, but I would, you know, again, I think to get it on there and then it had a catastrophic event and it be, uh, at the current level. It's just, the city will endeavor to, uh, to cover it to its, you know, to its, uh, I guess, conductibles. But, uh, the cost of the roof will be less than that and, uh, they're doing outside funding. So it's something that I think, uh, tomorrow when you're meeting city managers, that these items should be brought up with Mr. Gold. Uh, and just letting you know that this is fixed to occur. It'll be a, because I know it's in a separate part of the current policy. It's like additionally insured as far as liability, but there's no, no, uh, hail or, uh, wind damage, uh, on it. Uh, so just might want to bring it up. I would really hate to see them invest in, get everything operational and then it pour rain in the next few months, so.
This is definitely our first project.
Yes. And get rid of birds. To, to your benefit. I totally agree.
So at least the power needs some special frame in here.
Hey, we see it those new, uh, laser sites. It's right. All right, anything further for Main Street? We appreciate it. We're looking forward to it. Already.
On this resolution, do we say the amount that they're gonna rent it for, here we, do we add that to the resolution? As part of the resolution? Rent, I mean, rent.
There was no rent. It's an MOU, it's not a lease agreement. So the MOU allows us to do a memorandum of understanding.
Okay, okay, I get you, I get you.
Yeah, we understand they're gonna do certain things within the parameters of those contracts.
My bad, my bad.
And I know there was concerns over maybe it was to sustain itself, it will take community involvement, the council research. We're thinking about 60 people per event. To maintain, sustain, it's gonna take community involvement. Right now, there's not a whole lot of things to do with the community in Levington. The biggest concern I had was the extremely low rate of cost of getting in. I know that's one of those things. But it just seemed like in my simple math, that it was just due to the cost of everything else, it was below what I thought market value should be. And, um, that was one of the biggest concerns. I, it just seemed like there wasn't enough income to cover what you were wanting to cover. So I know there's some other outside sub funding and sources, but at some point it seemed like it might be a good starter, but at some point it was gonna have to go up. That was a big deal. We wake up that north way every day.
Well, and, um, there is some additional changes that were done to the, I did sit over the business plan this morning, um, that were done to the business plan based on from a few years ago to what we're looking at doing now. Um, there definitely is a phased business plan is what we're calling it. So this year, we get to be open, we're gonna do only secondary renovations, and then once we have funding for a stage of sound, then we would bring in a live act. And so a lot of it is going to be grant based, but like Chuck said, really is just gonna take the whole village to be able to bring it back out.
I'm waiting for it to open. First of June would be great.
All right, so. Construction ever works out of my favor, right?
No ones, I agree. All right, any other questions, any other comments? Thank y'all again, and we're looking forward to it, obviously, so. All right, Shannon, roll, uh, excuse me, roll call vote.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trupillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Dandy?
Yes.
Commissioner Voe?
Yes.
Mayor Voe?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Mayor, you're the city manager. Thank you all for your assistance on this and your support. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 042, approval to publish ordinance 599 EDC traffic study dollar general at 9:23 North Main.
Okay, we have a motion and second for the approval of this ordinance. Discussion.
It's just for the.
Oh.
The advertisement of the, the approval count for.
Okay.
On June the 12th. We don't need two weeks in the period of.
Right.
That will be the next meeting.
Any questions? Seeing that, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Trupillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Voe?
Yes.
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 Yes. Mr. White? Mr. Dandy doesn't do this. He doesn't pay bills, so.
Motion to the financial court in the U.S.
Second.
We have a motion and second to, uh, again, the financial report and, hey, everyone, questions? Sure there will be, so. Oh, okay. Oh, you're standing there? All right, Commissioner Voe, I guarantee you've got something you want.
Yeah, there were a couple.
Okay.
May I just mention, I can all the new art for. You got a question on dash electric?
Mm-hmm.
Let's, let's do what I, I've been telling you before. Wait for 27, 21, 21.
It's, it's removal and replacement of broken outdoor switch covers and it was to install repair.
Where's it at? Skate板?
Yeah.
And then the one rate people always.
The DPC?
Yeah, for water chlorine and waters that being used.
This, okay, the first one's for the water wells, I guess. This is for the water, this is for.
Yes.
And then it's, um, also these are wastewater. The next two are wastewater.
Wastewater, okay. I didn't know if that was something for a splash pad or. Wasting water or what? So that's all I was asking.
Now that, are we gonna need any water?
Right now, we have a, a drum of chlorine, a drum of merac acid. I'm getting another drum and another, uh, drum of merac acid, so we can have a. We all run out.
Okay, and that's what this plan had?
Yes. It was just, uh, I had two questions and Scotty asked one and this is the second one.
You want it? Hearing that? Oh, nevermind. Nice chapter, we ready? All right, Shannon, roll call vote.
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Trupillo?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. This will, uh, effectively conclude the first portion of the open session. We will be moving into closed session.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion and go into closed session pursuant to section 10 to 15 dash one, in a minute, in, you know, S.A. 1978, subsection 2H regarding limited personnel matters, city manager contract.
We have a motion and second to go into closed session. Shannon, roll call vote.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.